Okay, here we go. It's nice to see everybody here in the chambers. I'm sorry we're starting a couple minutes late this evening and great to see all my colleagues here. I know that Commissioner Cooney, you had a class to teach on this Tuesday evening. You weren't able to join us at our five o'clock meeting, but it's nice to see you and everybody back. So our first order of business is just the official opening of this Kalamazoo City Commission Business Meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, and we started off with a little call. Clerk Burley.
Commissioner Cooney.
President.
Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Burley. Well, we are honored this evening to have Pastor David Knaverski here from the Calvary Bible Church to provide an invocation, and just in a moment here, I'll be asking him to come forward. But please, out of respect, and we'll ask everybody to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Just a quick remark before we pray. I was thinking of Jeremiah 29:7. It says this, "Seek the welfare of the city where I have you in exile, and pray for he, the Lord, on its behalf; for in its welfare you will find your welfare." As individuals, we are set apart to love and bless people on behalf of the one who loved and blessed us. God's already prepared these opportunities for each one of us to be blessings to our community, but we do need to walk in them. Ephesians 2:7 says, "For we are God's handiwork, created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which God prepared in advance for us to do." So when we do this, our entire mindset can change. We will start to see relationships. We have an opportunity to demonstrate grace and mercy to others. But we want to thank Kalamazoo City Council on behalf of Calvary Bible Church and your members for your willingness to serve this community and to demonstrate grace and mercy to others. Let us pray together. Lord, we pray for those who are hurting in our community and who need healing. Some are struggling with anxiety, stress, trauma. Help us as community members to love and encourage those in our midst. Pray for our families. We pray for our families in our community to be strengthened and open communication with one another, and our community be able to help children and parents, spouses grow together in unity. We pray for peace and protection in our homes. We pray specifically for leaders, that they would lead with integrity and character and help them to make wise decisions that impact many of us here in Kalamazoo. We pray for businesses, government agencies, church leaders through our neighborhoods and city, that they would also lead with integrity, character, and humility. We pray for our city, that we would see transformation happen through wise decisions by leaders and individuals that would not seek their own good, but for the good of others. We pray for reconciliation in our communities. We seek and ask for healing, forgiveness where there has been hurt, reconciliation for where there has been divisions, and help us to grow together with people who are not like us. In these things, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all. Thank you so much, Pastor. I appreciate you attending this this evening. We have a guest with us, honored guest this evening, and I believe we have a presentation. Is that correct, City Manager Ritzma?
Yes, Your Honor. We have our Metro Executive Director, Sean McBride, here, and a couple members of his board to give a presentation on metro transit.
Welcome. Nice to have you here.
Sure. Good morning or good afternoon. We thank you, Mayor Anderson and the City Commission, for having us here tonight. Before I start with my presentation, I'll turn it over to our new chairperson, Kurt Artema. He's Chair of the KCTA and CCTA Boards.
Thanks, Sean. Appreciate the introduction. We also have Gary Lee McCormick here. Gary Lee is the Vice Chair of the CCTA. And we also want to recognize Greg Rosine, who served as Chair of both boards, actually, KCTA and CCTA since 2018, and has served on the Board since the mid-2000s, I believe. So a long number of years of service, and he's still on the Board, just no longer as Chair. So I'm serving as interim Chair and excited for that opportunity. Just as a reminder, the CCTA is the Central County Transportation Authority. That is primarily the urbanized area within Kalamazoo County, City of Kalamazoo, City Portage, Kalamazoo Township, City of Parkment, Oshmo Township, Comstock Township, and a small section of Texas Township is a part of an agreement we have with them as well. And then the KCTA, the Kalamazoo County Transportation Authority, is the countywide authority. That's primarily the on-demand service, door-to-door type service, that you can call ahead and get a ride to anywhere in the county and the VA Hospital in Battle Creek. We have a, we went through a process over the last couple of years, creating a new governance structure for the Boards as the Boards kind of mature and build on the foundation that was started a number of years ago. We updated the governance and made a few changes. We think that's working relatively well so far. We have a number of committees. The Board members are involved on a number of levels now with committee assignments and participation in essentially every element of the overall governance of the organization. So we also try to do a fair amount of tours of the facility, interaction with some of the staff members while we're there in the facility and just understand how the system operates at the same time. We have, I think from my standpoint, we certainly provide an essential service. Navigating through COVID was challenging. Sean and his team did great work going through that process. But we also serve as an economic development tool for the community and for the region. We're one of the few entities within this region that crosses all these jurisdictional boundaries and provides an essential service. So, and oftentimes employers call asking for access to transit to make an expansion or a placement of a new facility within the county as a part of their process. Housing is a big part of that, too. Locating housing, in particular affordable housing, near transit lines is a really key piece of bringing the whole package together from a quality of life standpoint. So, and I think we, so as fall starts, we also have a WMU agreement in place, and WMU is a great partner. We also have other partners within the region, KVCC and Bronson Hospital, among many others, but are excited to see many of those services back up and running again as we get into the fall season. And I think that covers the intro, and I probably covered some of Sean's items, but we'll go into Sean's report. Thanks.
There we go. So the mission of Metro is to improve the quality of life in the community by providing public transit services that are dependable, convenient, safe, efficient, cost-effective, and accessible for all. In 2023, we provided 1.8 million rides, and over our life, we provide over 121 million rides. And part of our life between 1967 and 2016, we were a proud Department of the City of Kalamazoo. After that time, we became an independent transit authority and have been operating since 2016. So the reason we provide public transit, the biggest need is to get people to jobs. Over 34% of our service on the fixed-rail bus system is getting people to work. Schools number two, and then recreation, medical appointments, and other reasons fill out the remainder. You know, one of the, we are certainly an economic development tool. So our fixed-rail bus system provided 1.7 million rides last year, 21% increase over the year before. We're seeing about a 15% increase this year. Ridership certainly increasing significantly as Western and KVCC and others are getting back into service just this last week. As we are rebuilding our workforce, we are increasing headway. What that means is the number of buses on the routes each hour. Typically, our routes either run once per hour or twice per hour, and as we increase staffing, we'll increase the number of routes that have two buses running per each hour. I would be remiss without acknowledging the day after Labor Day, our workforce. Most of our staff are members of the Amalgamated Transit Union. Our drivers, our mechanics, and several of our service staff are proud members of that, of the ATU. And they've really worked in cooperation with management on how we tackle several challenges like the pandemic, like the shooting that occurred at the KTC in 2021. Most of our routes are within the urban area of Kalamazoo. Service is extensive in the City of Kalamazoo, Portage, Parkment, Kalamazoo Township, Comstock Township, and Oshmo Township, and the bus fare is $1.50, so very affordable. Our other next biggest service is Metro Connect in a lot of communities. It's called Dial-A-Ride. This service is available to anyone to go anywhere in Kalamazoo County. It's primarily used by individuals that have disabilities or are senior citizens. And last year, we provided 126,000 trips, which was a 14% increase over the previous year. Again, we're seeing similar increases so far this year. The fare for that is if you are a senior citizen or individual with disability, it's either $3 or $4 per trip, and $12 per trip if you do not qualify for one of those. One thing we take pride on as an organization is our partnerships. One of the partnerships I really want to emphasize is our youth mobility program that's done in cooperation with the Foundation for Excellence, Kalamazoo Public Safety, and Metro. Just this past couple weeks, over 400 passes are being issued to high school students that are in need of mobility. The passes are being issued through the high schools, Central, Lloyd Norix, Kilp, and Phoenix. And another thing that we do is we take pride in our value-added emergency operation services. So during the pandemic, we were available to help with social distancing at several relocations that needed to relocate residents. During the winter, we get called quite often if there's a fire in the night, and we're used to help evacuate residents from the higher-density locations. We just started this past April, a new pilot service. It's called Metrolink. A lot of the concepts for Metrolink are those of Uber and Lyft, an on-demand service that you use through a phone application. The cost is a buck fifty per trip, and basically, the way we've designed it is that it's for two purposes. One, it's either for point-to-point service within one of our service zones, or it's for first-and-last-mile service. And what that means is we're trying to connect people to the fixed-rail bus system. So if you're on the outer edge of the services, you're further away from a fixed-rail bus service. It's too far to walk, so you can use this service and connect to a nearest point on the fixed-rail bus system and then have access to the full system. And that's a pretty unique concept, but it's been very successful. We're seeing a tremendous growth month over month, and we'll be making adjustments as we learn more and more through the pilot. The three zones, as you can kind of see on your screen here, there's a south zone that's significantly the City of Portage and slightly over I-94. The east zone, which covers Comstock Township and a significant portion of the east side of the City of Kalamazoo, and the west portion, which covers Oshmo, part of Oshmo Township, KVCC, and kind of the southeast, southwest portion of the City of Kalamazoo. I encourage those to try it. Even if you live outside the zone, you can use it to travel to areas in other, in the zones. If you're going out to, for example, Southport, if you want to take a, if you're going to the airport, one of the reasons, you could connect from fixed-rail bus system to Metrolink and then arrive at the airport. Coming up this next year, we will be going out for a millage election. Our CCTA millage will be expiring this upcoming year, and we anticipate we'll be going out to the voters in November of 2025. So one of the things that we'll be requesting is your support in help educating the voters of the City of Kalamazoo about the upcoming millage election. And just overall, to operate the public transit system is about a $20 million operating cost. We're seeing, like a lot of organizations, inflationary pressures on our commodities. For example, fixed-rail bus costs pre-pandemic about $550,000. Currently, a fixed-rail bus is costing $750,000, so a significant cost increase. And just to refresh, our CCTA millage is, was voted to approve. It's been 0.9 mills. It's been reduced with a headly amendment and expires in 2025. And then we also have a countywide millage, which funds the Metro Connect service. That's, and that expires the following year. It's 3.124 mills. That's a quick down and dirty of public transit. Just a couple things. One thing that we do really appreciate as staff is working with the staff of the City of Kalamazoo. There's some huge projects going on, some huge changes going on that impact our ability to provide service, but we appreciate the communication and working with us as much as possible ahead of time to acknowledge and design into their projects the needs of people that are using public transit. So thank you. Good evening. Gary Lee McCormick. This was my, let's see, I want to thank City Manager Ritzma, Mayor Anderson, and all the committee, City Commissioners, for the privilege of being able to serve you for two decades. This has been one of the joys of my life, being able to serve on this Board and to have the continued support of this Board. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming here and providing this report to us. If people are interested in this information, is there, would you direct people to find this report?
Sure. Information is available on our website at kmetro.com. Feel free to call me. We always like working with community members and nonprofit organizations on how best to address your individual mobility needs.
All right. Very important. Thank you so much. Appreciate your volunteer time and all your efforts.
Thanks.
Now is the opportunity for the adoption of our formal agenda. Commissioners, are there any items that you would like to move from G, the consent agenda, to H, the regular agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to find where it was, but we had a few residents reach out to ask if the item on the consent agenda related to five, yep, the Santiago Services contract, so asked to have that moved from the consent agenda.
All right, item five, move to the regular agenda. Commissioner Cooney, did you have, that's the one you wanted? All right. One item will be moved. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to move, have any item from the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda beyond the one that's already been requested? All right, seeing no one, we'll be moving that one item. That will now be the second item on our regular agenda. Now is an opportu, oh, communications. Mayor Ritzma.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Now is the opportunity for public comments, for our public comment period. Just as a reminder, this is not a time for dialogue. This is an opportunity for anybody who is here in the chambers to provide some comments here to the City Commission, and of course, that's, this is publicized as well. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in a city.
I go by K. I'm part of We the People Kalamazoo. And I just want to talk about the Imagine Kalamazoo surveys. I hope that some of this money could be used towards housing. A lot of times, these surveys, I see the results, and it says that housing was like one of the top things that gets addressed, and then we see the bare minimum put towards housing, right? When they, when new housing is built using, you know, tax, you know, tax credits, we see the bare minimum of units going towards that. We see deforestation, right? We see like 209 East Stockbridge, right, that natural water basin being destroyed for 10, 10, 11 units, and there's 2,000 people with housing vouchers that are in need. So that's not putting a dent on anything. So it's a collaborative effort. I'm not here to, you know, like, point my finger at anybody, like, specifically, but I do want to say that, you know, we are here to try to make a change, not only here, but in the state as well. If you all could please support the House Bills 4919, which is the Homeless Bill of Rights, and the Renters Bill of Rights, and there's also lifting the ban on rent control, which is House Bill 4947. So these are things that are going to help us get a hold of the housing crisis. Like, the house is burnt down. The foundation, the housing ecosystem is rotted. Zero to 30% AMI cannot find housing. 60 to 80% is struggling, and they go from 60 to 80% of AMI to 0% AMI and end up in the streets with trauma, you know, when they try to find their services. When you're in an emergency, you need those services then. These services are not responding with the urgency that needs to be responded. And a lot of times, it's because of the lack of real focus on funding, right? Buffering these services that are already out there organizing ourselves around, like, the people who are already advocating for harm reduction, for rapid rehousing, people who already have the knowledge, right, tapping in to the people who are in your emails, in, you know, in your phones, and so it's like time to listen to the people. It's time to address, you know, not address it by policing people or renewing, you know, these contracts with people who are gonna pay a certain amount to sweep. It's about, you know, like, really addressing the root cause, right? Policing is expensive. It doesn't work. It's more traumatic on top of the services being traumatic. The police is traumatizing people that are just trying to live, just trying to do basic human rights, you know, alienable rights or basic human, like sleeping and eating and trying to find a bathroom. There's no access, right? And so if we're a progressive city, we need to show that. We need to show something different than what the country is doing.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tina McClintock. I live on Lake Street. I live in the low-line floodplain area, the area that floods all the time. I've been here for seven years, asking you guys to do something about the flooding. And all I hear is you still want to destroy the last natural green space in our neighborhood to build, which is just gonna cause more flooding. I have repeatedly spoke about the flooding issues and saving natural green spaces in flooding areas. I have watched as funds are stirred away from poor neighborhoods like mine and watch resources as they are spent over the line in wealthy areas like downtown. I have seen a lot of wasted money. If there is any integrity left in this City Commission or any of the commissions, any of the boards, we will prioritize the resources and solve the flooding in my South Town neighborhood once and for all. It's been seven years. And not steer the money quietly around your new event center. Us homeowners have to work two jobs just to survive the flooding of Kalamazoo. We are not downtown, and we do not, we do not want to be downtown. We deserve dry streets just as any wealthy downtown area or any wealthy neighborhood deserves. You build on contaminated land that's not safe. There's chemicals in the land. If you were smart, you would take down all these burnt-up houses, which we have a lot of fires going around in Kalamazoo, for all your abandoned buildings that sit around for years and years. Okay, please do something about the flooding. I have another issue. I have another issue. I watch people on bikes. I watch them every day where I work at. They go right through the stop sign. They don't stop. They look to see if anything's coming, and they keep on going. Why do they not have to follow the rules of the road when cars do? We have to stop at a stop sign. We have to stop at a red light. They do not stop at red lights. I see it every day coming down the street where I work at. We watch them to see if they're gonna stop. They don't. That's so dangerous, and they're wondering why all these bikes are getting hit. Some of them don't follow the rules of the road. You need to take them back to school and learn them how to stop at a red light. Cars too, because I watch three of them go through a light. First, the yellow one will go through, and then three more follow right behind, because they're tired of waiting at the light. I had to wait at Oakland Drive and Parkview five times today just to get through that light on Parkview to get to work. That's how many times it took to get through. Another thing, rent is ridiculous in Kalamazoo. Can't nobody afford to live in Kalamazoo. I mean, you tear down every green space, you tear down every natural space to put parking lots and big buildings. How about building small apartments?
Six apartments, I don't know how many.
Thank you. Next, please. Seeing no one else, yes?
Good evening there, everyone. I just want to say thanks to the mayor of Kalamazoo for allowing us to do our cover story. It was a lot of, you know, emailing, you know, back and forth, but I was glad that we were able to accomplish, you know, just a cover story on the mayor of Kalamazoo. And also, I thank the commissioners for giving us the permission to feature all the commissioners on our current issue. So, you know, currently, you know, we've been one of the longest publishing companies in the city of Kalamazoo, you know, and, you know, we just need some help, you know. We also featured in Downtown Library. So, so in addition to publishing the magazine, it's currently sold there at Michigan News, Town and Country, Hardin's Market. And if you're interested in a digital magazine, we received a grant from the city of Kalamazoo. And on my way to propose to my wife in Nigeria, I got the idea to create a digital magazine. So I was able to use my wife to create a digital magazine. So in addition to buying a copy, you can also buy digitally. But the main reason why I came here tonight, because there's a lot of mental health issues happening. And being a school teacher, you know, I don't understand how students feel and their parents, you know, you know, once, once in a while, when I talk to my kids, Washington or Millwood Middle, they can't focus right. And I'm like, what's going on? I just lost my dad. I just lost my mom. I just lost my grandpa. So we really need to do a good job to focus on mental health. I have a best friend, his name is Michael Wilder, you know, he does GVI, and every time somebody gets shot, he has to do a piss smoke. And I actually witnessed, somebody that witnessed the guy that got shot five times in Alamo, and we had to go there, do a piss smoke and all that. So we really need to do a good job to talk about mental health, because whatever goes up in here, you know, sends a signal to your body. And I know from experience, because I collapsed, you know, from my brain, I had to go to the hospital and all that. So whatever goes on in your brain in terms of the way you behave, I mean, something is happening, you gotta stop fighting and acting crazy. So reading more stories on mental health in this magazine than the rest of my own city. TSMP, also they're studying our children. So Mr. Mayor, most stories are from the United States and Nigeria. So this is not only, this is all the company. That's what we're doing, so we're going to do it, and the rest of the city commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
My name is Rick Fryman. I live in Portage. I missed the committee, the hall today, the public comments, so I'll make some comments now. I just want to express my support for the solar project that you guys are considering. Realize you guys don't have a lot of land, horizontal space, rooftops, and to put enough solar to actually make a big difference with your electricity load here. So this is really a unique opportunity to put, to gain almost 200 acres worth of solar power just by signing a contract that is essentially free. It's no cost, because the subscription monthly payments are offset by the revenues from selling the electricity of solar panels. Seems almost too good to be true, but it seems like it is true. So anyway, I support the, that project as much as you can go for it. I'd want to add to that, that it doesn't have to be that project or your city buildings. You can do both, and I encourage you to do both. Once you have this contract, if you go through with it, still pursue solar on your buildings to the extent that it's feasible. I will point out that my great city of Portage is putting on solar panels on their city hall building, 390 panels, about $430,000 project, that the savings of it monthly is expected to pay for itself in six years, and then it'll be free from there on. So the point is that the cost of solar is going down, and it's worthwhile exploring the possibilities of using it yourself. Then there's the rest of your city. Are you going to promote renewable energy or probably solar for the rest of Kalamazoo? How would you do that? What about people with, live in the shade, they can't put it on there? The renters is a big problem. They can't put solar panels on. What if they just can't afford the financing? Well, that is where something called, the middle ground called Community Solar comes in, and I subscribe to Community Solar, Consumers Energy's version of it, which is Solar Gardens, they call it. But I'd like to make the distinction that my subscription is not as favorable as what they're offering you. My subscription, I get like a third of it back in credits from the electricity sold. So, but it's still worth it to me, and I'm gonna get solar panels next year, and I'm out of time. Thank you.
So, my name is Ben Brown. I spoke earlier. I'm a resident here in Kalamazoo. Just wanted to bring up a couple of thoughts about the possible solar gardens, is if it has to be situated outside of the city, I was talking with Commissioner Pradel, that in other areas, they're actually raising the solar panels up off the ground so that cattle, sheep, even some crops would be sheltered even from intense sun, things like that. There's many possibilities, and I will try to reach out to the commissioners and the mayor. And you probably know all of this anyway, but I will share that because it has the potential for saving farms, for mitigating runoff, and other possibilities too. So just something to be aware of. Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, city resident, rank my vote volunteer, and candidate for Kalamazoo Public Library District Board of Trustees on an upcoming November ballot. Last year, I and other rank my vote volunteers collected 3,200 petition signatures from city of Kalamazoo residents. That allowed us to place a ranked choice voting question on the November municipal ballot. Kalamazoo voters approved our city charter amendment with 71% support. Also last year, rank my vote volunteers in East Lansing and Royal Oak collected petition signatures in their cities, qualified ranked choice voting questions for their November municipal ballots, and received voter approval of their charter amendments. In 2021, our ranked choice voting city charter amendment was approved in Ann Arbor with 73% voter support. In 2004, Ferndale voters approved ranked choice voting in their city. Five Michigan cities have now amended their charters to ranked choice voting. We are building upon the success and moving forward with a statewide petition drive and ballot campaign to amend the Michigan Constitution for ranked choice voting on the November 2026 ballot concurrent with the next gubernatorial election. The petition drive will begin next spring 2025 and last for up to six months until we've collected our goal of 700,000 petition signatures statewide. We need our volunteers in place before next spring, so we're currently recruiting volunteers from all across the state. Anyone interested in volunteering can sign up on our website at rankmyvote.org/volunteer, where my is M.I., the postal abbreviation for Michigan. Our first big push for volunteers statewide begins next Monday when we kick off our 40 Town Halls in 40 Days campaign. Across 40 days in September and October, we're scheduling 40 town halls about ranked choice voting in cities all across Michigan. The tour makes its first West Michigan stop here in Kalamazoo on Tuesday, September 17, at 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. That town hall will be held in the Van Duzen Room on the third floor of Central Library in downtown Kalamazoo. Our tour comes to Portage a week later on Thursday, September 26, at the Unitarian Universalist Community Church on Shaver Road. We'll be at the Public Library in St. Joe on October 17, and Hope College in Holland on October 18. RSVP for these town halls and see our full list of tour stops at rankmyvote.org/events. Please attend our town halls to learn about the benefits of ranked choice voting, how it works, and ask any and all of your democracy reform questions. Also come to these town halls to meet our rank my vote volunteers and sign up to volunteer with us. In Kalamazoo County, we'll need about 100 volunteers to meet our signature goal. Thank you. I'll be giving city clerk Scott Boiling a copy of my remarks, and I'm gonna go ahead over the county board meeting and say the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to take advantage of the public comment period for this evening? All right, seen no one, I want to thank everyone that took the time and made the effort to come down here to provide public comments. Next on our agenda is public hearings. Mayor Ritzma.
Item F1 is a public hearing to receive comments on a resolution approving an application for a commercial redevelopment exemption certificate at 5135 and 5147 Portage Road.
All right, thank you, Mayor Ritzma. So we have had a rather extensive set of presentations and discussions about this particular set of items that's occurring here. So I don't, presume you've got another presentation planned?
No, but we have Paul Dernger here from our community planning, economic development to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioners, questions on this item? All right, thank you so much. Spent a lot of valuable hours discussing this and understanding it. So seeing no questions here from the commission, is there anyone in the chambers here that would like to comment on this item? If so, you have three minutes. Please come forward, state your name and whether you live in the city. Thank you so much. Seen no one, is there a motion to approve this application for a commercial redevelopment exemption certificate?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Discussion commissioners. Seen no one, Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Boiling, and thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Second public hearing.
Item F2 is a public hearing to receive comments on an ordinance and resolution approving an amendment to the final development plan and agreement for the Friendship Village Planned Unit Development located at 1400 and 1402 North Drake Road and the western 1,440 feet of 4300 Beach Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor Ritzma. Once again, this is a topic that we have a presentation on, so I presume that we are going to be question-driven as far as this item goes?
Yeah, and we have Assistant City Planner Bobby Durkey here.
Mr. Durkey, good to see you. Questions on this particular item? Commissioner Pradel?
Hey, good evening. I just had a, was wondering if you could just explain a little bit about the discussion that happened at the planning commission, especially related to like the buffer area that was referenced. I know that was perhaps the most contentious point at the planning commission meeting. We also had a number of residents who showed up to that planning commission meeting, I think actually slightly more, well, more than we had even at the last city commission meeting. So could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so the buffer was discussed as a buffer that exists currently on the eastern edge of the property. Through the application and from the original approval, it was found that the northern portion was in a neighboring PUD and was cleared and, you know, trees grew there at that time. And the original staff recommendation for the amended PUD was to remove the northern 225 feet, but after the dialogue and some of the public feedback, a suggestion was from the planning commission to amend the condition to keep the buffer the same length, not cut it off, but add to the language to permit a stormwater retention basin within there. And that was, by the planning commission, thought to be an agreeable solution. So that was the recommendation that was made, and then myself and, who I understand, I believe Justin Gish spoke at the community of practice, he did a little bit of research into buffers. What also came up was the specificity of the language. Does it have to be trees or this or the other thing? And what was found was that buffer is a very common term to use for preservation of land, and where even the EPA had specific standards for stormwater retention basins within buffers. So it was interesting to find staff afterwards found there's precedent for stormwater basins in there. So the agreement is largely the same, but the city attorney's office added the language for the, to permit the stormwater basin in there, and they show an outline of where that is on the PUD plan. So it would still be the same geography. The PUD plan shows the woodlands remaining, but it does show a pond to go in that northern portion.
I can't remember if it's the, like, the 1972 version of the PUD or the 1997 version, but it's my understanding that the city commission actually intervened to talk about that buffer section. But it's somewhat vague, right? Like, what is a buffer? So it could be just a mowed grass area between a huge development that goes up in a neighborhood. And so there's, like you said, there's not a lot of specificity into that. Can you talk a little bit about that as well, and is that fairly common?
It likely is common, at least by the research we saw, to use the term buffer. The buffer does go back to the 1972 approval, except at that time, 1402 Drake, the eastern parcel, was gonna be houses. So it was on the western end. When the PUD was amended for an expansion, then the commission sought to have it then moved to where the current buffer was from a residential area, because the minutes back in the 70s talk about recognizing the more intensive land use from the houses and the importance of maintaining that.
And it's also my understanding that the planning commission's not able to do this, but if we wanted to add more teeth or specificity to what's defined in that buffer, that could be accomplished by the city commission, correct?
That is correct. Essentially, the deed restriction is with the city of Kalamazoo.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Durkey? Commissioner Pradel, did you want to follow up on that?
Well, I was gonna wait till the discussion portion, but I think, personally, you know, listening to the neighbors come speak at the planning commission, I get frustrated by examples in the city, and I think there was a good example on Portage Road when a developer was working on another senior complex not so long ago, over the course of the pandemic. And, you know, the neighbors were rightfully frustrated, right? And they have a large building going up, you know, basically in their backyard.
Yep.
And, you know, I guess what I would ask is instead of us trying to add more teeth here from the dais and say, hey, there should here from the dais and say, hey, there should be a, you know, 20-foot tree barrier or whatever in the buffer or whatever, just be a good neighbor, you know? I mean, basically commit to us that you're going to listen to the neighbors and, you know, talk to them about what would be satisfactory and what would, you know, make them feel more comfortable about what's happening in their, basically their backyard. And so I guess that's the message I wanted to kind of send loud and clear, is just that, you know, we've seen this happen before, and there were clearly neighbors who were upset about, you know, flooding that they were having in their backyard, pervasive flooding in their backyard, and concerns about, like, you know, what they would see happen and unfold in their backyard. And I think this is an example of where you can just be a good neighbor as a developer and talk to your neighbors and ask them what would be satisfactory. And I think that's perfectly reasonable and fair, but I wanted them to hear that from our mouth, to know that we're paying attention to this and that we'd like to get this right.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. If you could, you and I had a little conversation before the meeting, and it's kind of, kind of goes to what Commissioner Pradel was saying. What was it that is some kind of contract or something they filled out that says that they'll monitor certain things? Can you talk about that for us?
Yes, that discussion was during construction, obviously there's going to be visible effects, and in some of the conversations I had with concerned citizens was, well, what does that pond look like when it's done? And the nuance of that was discussed, the design, size, and makeup of that basin is reviewed through site plan review, there's city planners and engineers that look at that. So when you have one of those, you're keeping your stormwater on your property, in a bowl on your property, kind of what the law says. So to ensure that that is maintained or built, instead of just becoming, say, a weed-choked pond, there is a stormwater maintenance agreement, and through our site plan review process, when somebody builds one of those basins, there's a recorded agreement with the city that puts the responsibility to submit inspection reports and maintain it in perpetuity. So an example, the stormwater basin that exists there now looks like a wild vegetative area. If it was to be expanded for this and to look like that, we would have a detailed set of plans, you know, like the nat, more of a natural basin, and that is something recorded with the property in perpetuity, so you can't lose that paperwork.
And so, like, if something did happen, say with a, if the city started receiving complaints, say, from neighbors about, you know, water and certain things they feel is affecting where they're at, then what those individuals or landowners or community owners could do is they could come and file a complaint with the city, and then the city would go back to this agreement that is signed between the developer, and then they would have to rectify that, or the city would take care of it and fine them, or they would have to pay the funds for that. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think that kind of goes to what you're saying, you say, be a good neighbor. I know we had an individual that was, you know, had concerns about that, is there something signed? So I just kind of wanted to put that out there and let them know that there is something that is signed, and maybe residents, community members just don't know about that. So I just kind of want to put that on the record, that if something like that happens, is they can come to the city and file a complaint, and these organizations or these businesses or this developer would be responsible in some way.
Yep, that is correct. A little bit of what I communicated to some of the questions I received was, there's still site plan reviews, the city posts it publicly, NFP goes in for the NFP board, so this decision, the public can still view and has a chance to speak before any dirt moves.
Go ahead, Commissioner Decker.
And where would they find that site plan review? How would they get to that if an individual wanted to go and take a look at that and also make comments as it is going through the four to eight, the 12-week process?
That is a good question. It is www.kalamazoo-city.org/sitepplans, S-I-T-E-P-L-A-N-S, and any site plan that's under review is posted there until it's approved.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and that's any site plan for any development that is happening within the city. Thank you.
And just to clarify that, part of the review is reviewed by our Natural Features Protection Committee as well, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Are questions for staff at this point?
I didn't want to diminish the fact, you know, we desperately need more housing, especially, you know, senior housing in our community, but, you know, go back to it, you know, if you're going to spend tens of millions of dollars to do the development, what is it going to take to spend a couple tens of thousands of dollars to make sure that your neighbors feel as equally positive as your residents, you know? And that's all I'm asking, is just do the right thing.
Appreciate that. Yeah, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. This might not be for you, but maybe for the developer, is there, is there time that they can engage with the neighbors to hear what they have to say and have some kind of input? Is that possible at this point?
I suppose anyone can engage anytime, however, this application, there was the city public notices, and then per our public participation plan, the scale of this one, the property owner Friendship Village sent out their own notice, and they hosted an open house informational session, I believe that was in late June before the planning commission meeting, and their notice included the notice for that event. So that was what has gone out, and I do know, talking with the developer, that they've communicated, that they've reached out about their future plans as well.
I think with a, with a level of participation now, I think it would be right to reengage once again. I believe, I don't know when they were notified, but it's clear that people feel like they don't have any power to make a, make a decision, make an informed decision about what happens in their backyard, and so I think it would be wise to maybe consider doing that one more time, especially since it's had this much pushback.
Other comments or questions for staff here? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Durkey, I appreciate that. Now is the opportunity for public comments on this item. Speakers will have three minutes. If you want to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city.
I'm Beth Banden-Homburg, and I live at 1417 North Hampton Road. Our backyard abuts to the property line at Friendship Village. In the packet, the electronic packet that I sent with a multitude of photos regarding the behavior relations, I guess, with Friendship Village is incredibly disheartening. We have Friendship Village chopping trees, trees, at the property line and falling on and damaging fences. We have Friendship Village coming onto our property and returning the hose, so now the flood backs up onto our property and damages our shed. I'd mentioned in my note that my husband and I don't believe in coincidence. That happened approximately two weeks after my husband and I came and spoke to the City Planning Commission, and I had my photo boards, and I shared what these folks, what this organization is like and what it's like to have to be subject to their bullying and their hostile behaviors. And with regard to the meeting engagement, they didn't play that. They sent a letter with Pope Development on it. I'd actually called Friendship Village and was, you know, looking for a meeting and waiting for it. They sent it, it was junk mail, nobody, I threw it away. And then I have, I'm like, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, I called Friendship Village and I fished it up out of the trash. They said they reached out to Ron Hustert, Westwood Neighborhood Association. They did not. This meeting was held at 4 o'clock on a Thursday with, what, five days' notice? And Commissioner Hoffman, I really like your idea of offering engagement, and I think that I'd like to see it mandatory. And, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that wants to comment on this item? All right, thank you, those of you that did. Now I'm going to close this public hearing. The recommended action is a motion to adopt, is there a motion?
Smoked.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel. Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Discussion commissioners. Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really would like to see more engagement during this period, because if it doesn't happen, this is not a done deal yet. And so I think it would be feasible, and I think it would be just to have another meeting where residents can be heard by the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Not so much discussion, but another question here, so in the process, any other public notifications that come from the city relative to this on the NFP hearing or the site plan or anything along those lines?
Any development that requires site plan review within the NFP overlay district has to receive site plan approval from the Natural Feature Review Committee, so that would be a public hearing for something, a development out of that triggers site plan. So the three-story 80-unit building to the east there, that would require site plan review and NFP approval.
All right, thank you so much. And how is notification made about the NFP meeting? Does that, is that a required standard 300-foot, kind of a notification from the city?
Correct. 300 feet from 15, 300 feet, the same exact noticing as the planning commission.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Durkey. Any other discussion? All right, Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. Next is the consent agenda, City Manager Ritzma.
The following items have been presented for approval this evening. First is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase of sodium hexametaphosphate in the amount of $162,393. Next is the approval of a contract with Detroit Salt Company, L.C., for the, through the MyDeal Cooperative Purchasing Program for seasonal road salt in the amount of $181,450. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Taplin Group for transportation and disposal of plant screenings in the amount of $183,750. Next is the approval of a contract with Waste Management of Michigan for the rental placement and removal of roll-off containers for street sweeping operations in the amount of $410,025. Next is the approval of a sole-source contract with Pure Air for carbon filtration unit carbon replacement in the amount of $516,752. Next is the approval of a professional service agreement with Prina Newhoff for the design of a proposed expansion of the Kalamazoo Regional Water System in the amount of $987,600. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving a change in the street lighting contract with Consumers Energy for 234 West Cedar Street. Next is the approval of the allocation of one full-time equivalent staff position in the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for a building inspector slash plan reviewer slash soil erosion inspector, and approval of a budget amendment for the cost of the position in 2024. Next is the approval of agreements with the YWCA for the use of the City Commission Initiative's budget to provide grants in the amount of $50,000 to support the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund and $50,000 to support the YWCA Victim Services Program. Next is the authorization to execute a bilateral permit with Level 3 telecommunications pursuant to the Metropolitan Extension Telecommunications Right-Away Oversight Act. Next is the approval of a grant agreement to provide ARPA funds to the Boys and Girls Club for the Bridging Opportunities Program in the amount of $123,000. Next is the acceptance of a match on main grant for the Michigan Strategic Fund and approval of a grant agreement to support reimbursement of eligible expenditures by Leila's Cool Pops Incorporated in the amount of $25,000. Next is the acceptance of a grant from the Michigan Department State, Michigan State Police Emergency Management and Homeland Security Division to assist with the Southwest Michigan Severe Storms and Tornadoes of May 2024 in the amount of $36,632. Next is the approval of the nomination of Adrian Vasquez Elletore for appointment to the Foundation for Excellence's Board of Directors as an affinity stakeholder director for a term beginning on September 23, 2024, and ending on May 31, 2026. Next is the approval of a recommendation to the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners that Greg Rosin be reappointed as one of the three city representatives on the Central County Transportation Authority Board of Directors. And finally, approval of a purchase agreement with Donovan Martin for the purchase of 502 Lawrence Street.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 4 and 6 through 17, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes. Yes, but I need to abstain from item 10.
10, okay.
Thank you, commissioners, items on the consent agenda are approved. Now we're at the regular agenda, City Manager Ritzma.
Item H1 is approval of a professional service agreement with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the water treatment plant number 14 and 5 consolidated design in the amount of $1.954,800 million.
Thank you so much, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report?
No, but our Director Baker is here to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions? We've also discussed this prior, this isn't brand new to us, so there has been discussion and presentation about this. No questions from commission, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item, this item H1? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and whether you live in the city. Seen no one, the recommended action is a motion to approve, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker. Hoffman, thank you.
Supported over there.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. All right, missed that one. Discussion commissioners. All right, Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. Next is new regular agenda item 2, formerly number 5 from G, the consent agenda. Manager Ritzma.
Approval of a contract extension with Santiago Services for nuisance trash and debris handling in the amount of $453,000.
All right, thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there anyone here who could make a presentation on this item?
Yeah, I asked that Sergeant Abiel Awon be here today. He is in charge of our community services team and public safety, and he's going to give a brief presentation of the purpose of this contract and what it means for their work out in the community, handling encampments and so forth. Sergeant Abiel?
Awon.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Again, Sergeant Awon with Kalamazoo Public Safety, the community service team. The presentation I was asked to present was to give an outline of what we do. We go into the, we, I'm sorry, we service the unhoused population and those suffering from mental health. those suffering from mental health. Uh, we go into the camps, we do outreach, um, and we, uh, as well as do cleanup of any debris, hazardous material, um, that we find from abandoned camps or camps left behind, uh, to which has come up with the sum that we've established from last year. Uh, these are some of the hazards that we've been, uh, encountering with the boardwalk underneath, uh, the Kalamazoo Valley Trail. One of the camps that we've been going through, the asylum lake. And these are all city-owned properties. Uh, we don't deal with any of the private-owned properties. The private properties, the owners of the properties are responsible for the cleanup of their own property. So whatever thousands of dollars they have to incur, that's their responsibility. Um, and then with our team, we, uh, we work with several different partners, uh, as listed above.
Thank you. So, Manager Ritzma?
Yeah, um, I think it's important that, uh, people understand where the city of Kalamazoo is, is working in areas to help with, uh, our unhoused community. Great work by the community services team and, uh, reaching out and, and working with folks and trying to get them help and resources. And, uh, you know, that's great work. This group of partners have been meeting too, and, and these are all the organizations that are involved day-to-day, boots on the ground, dealing with, um, with our houseless community. Uh, and so I, I just wanted to highlight the work that's being done and, um, you know, we've got a long ways to go in, in helping manage this situation, but we're, we're gonna continue at it and we've been at it for many years now. And, uh, there's more work to be done. Uh, Commission, at the last meeting, you allocated 1.2 million dollars for a project to help with, um, with families that are unhoused. So, uh, that's a great, uh, a great project that's coming forward and we'll continue to look for other opportunities to, to plug in and to help, um, with our partners in, in dealing with this situation.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Commissioners, questions on this item? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Sergeant Awon, for everything that you and your team do. And I just kinda wanna respond, and I think the reason we had you to come and kind of give a little presentation is because we'd been receiving emails, um, regarding this particular item. And one thing about what you guys do and what, um, the, what Santiago does is they are equipped and they are trained to handle specific hazardous materials that can be there. It can be fluids, that can be needles, it can be, it's just anything that's like that. And, you know, I never ever wanna diminish, especially, you know, the individual that sent us the email talking about dignity and motion. But, you know, I do believe that they could also be an asset in helping our teams in what we do. And, and I believe that they could be, but I also believe that, you know, for them to also take a look and see, are they trained in hazmat? Um, are they trained in dealing in certain things like that? Uh, do they have the right equipment and everything to make sure that they're safeguarding themselves as they go out there, as, again, the Santiago Services does? Now, I know we're getting ready to extend, possibly extend this contract for two years, and I would say, um, I would like, hopefully, the next time this bid does go out, is that we are able to open it up for bidding for other organizations that do some of the work right now here already in the city. Um, and then maybe if there's certain requirements that they need to become fully trained and equipped to do what Santiago Services do, maybe there's some way, you know, you or your team could put something like that together or work with the Santiago Services and find out, hey, what kind of training do these other organizations need to come out and assist us so then it's not just one and we have a plethora of other individuals and companies and organizations that are also doing what you guys do out there within the city and not just a service that's just coming to clean up. Someone else that actually works or organizations that actually work with the individuals that are out there so they can also give that support. So, um, I think that could be something great and another, you know, community builder right there, uh, because, again, a lot of these, a lot of our houseless individuals, they may know some of these individuals and feel more comfortable working with them and helping with services and things like that. So, um, just my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Any other discussion or que, I'm sorry, questions or? Discussion, okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down for this.
Thank you.
Uh, since there's no more questions for staff at this time, uh, now is an opportunity for someone who'd like to comment on this item. Please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hi, I'm Kay, um, from We the People, but also speaking on behalf of all the concerned citizens. I know y'all received the email, so I'm going to read it, right? Um, there was a request for the consent item, right, uh, for a contract extension with Santiago Services to be moved to the regular agenda. Thank you for that. And for it to be tabled for the meeting, moving it to public hearing for several reasons. One, we need to real, reallocate at least half of these funds to actually help solve the issues we have in the city surrounding our unhoused community. And the mention of 1.2 million dollars is, um, it's not a fast solution, right? It's still in the planning. What, and so the question is, um, why do we keep having these nuisances, nuisance trash and debris cleanups? The city, the city keeps moving the same people, um, after these cleanups. It's the same people downtown. So we need a better humane solution that doesn't waste, waste tax dollars. Policing homelessness, sweeping camps and cleanups are the most expensive and least effective methods for solving homelessness. And for some of the sweeps, there's no services out there. It's just KDPS, sweeping people, um, giving them no time. Um, if, sometimes they give them time, it's up to them. It's a lot of times people don't have time to move their things. And then once Santiago Services is there, it's over. Yeah, their stuff gets thrown away. Um, extorting rates and co, and costs charged by this company have gone unchecked. When the time comes, you know, um, the community was requesting this contract to be open for bids and, um, because, as many of you know, we have done camp cleanups. We were doing two major cleanups mid-January of 2023. It was costing city taxpayers zero dollars. We had spent approximately 120 in supplies plus food. As the camps did the majority of the cleanups, we fed them three times a day. We had dumpsters donated and the company owner paid for the dump, dumping fees. This expense was less than 150 dollars for the two dumps. Had this not been interrupted, his company fees would have been totaled approximately 300 dollars and we would have only had to purchase more trash bags and food items for the meals. When we volunteers were forced off the property for Santiago to, to do the cleanup, Santiago billed and was paid almost 37K for this one camp. This occurred on or about January 22, 2023. And, um, you can email Judy Lowry back, um, for more information and proof about this. So this is very expensive and I don't think the city really has, um, have y'all gotten like a budget breakdown of what is happening? And so community members are, um, aware and educated. There's a lot of organizations that dedicate their, you know, um, on education about, you know, the safe handling, um, what risks involve in being out in the camps, um, just so you're aware, yeah. So there is, um, a lot of education about how these, this could be handled more humane. I think that that's the approach.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this item? Uh, see, no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve the contract extension. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Prado. Supported by Commissioner Decker. Thank you. Discussion, commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, Sergeant Awon and his people do wonderful work and I know how much I've written with him. I know how much he cares about the people and he shows that and they know that he cares and they respond. And city manager Ritzma is correct. We have been doing a lot and the fact that last week or when, last meeting, when we agreed to work with the county to buy, um, a, 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 whatever it was, was a, what was it? Yeah, hotel and with 64 units, I believe, these are steps in the right direction. At the same time, in, in that contract, as I read it, in that contract, we're spending 96,000 dollars a year, um, to clean up. Um, and if we had 96,000 dollars to spend on these people, that would be wonderful. At the same time, we can't let things like that continue. So we're in a tough spot. People, Judy Lowry and her group say, well, we're, we're cleaning it up. But, uh, as we talked before the meeting, um, do they need hazardous training? Do they need all the protections to do that kind of thing? It's not so easy just to go out there and clean that up. People could get hurt, people could get sick. I don't know the answer to this. If we put it out there, again, have it rebid, that might be okay. Uh, we could hear people come forth. But I think we would put in conditions that they would have to have had that training and I'm not sure that they have that. So I'm not exactly sure what to do on this. I don't like spending 96,000 dollars a year cleaning up, but I sure don't like this out in, in the public places. So I'm thinking about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other discussion on this item? Commissioner Prado?
Just had more or less a question because I was trying to jog my memory, but it seems to me that the city was spending hu, hundreds of thousands of dollars in the encampments because of cleanup expenses and supportive services and those sort of things. I think we, restrooms, all those things. Do you have any recollection of like what we actually spent in those periods?
Do you have that in the presentation from before? It's, it's over a half a million dollars, I know that.
Any other discussion? Uh, Commissioner Cooney?
I just think we have to keep exploring new ways to address this problem. Uh, it, it's not enough just to keep saying, okay, we've done some great things. We, I know that you are keeping exploring. My thought is we need somebody in here who has a lifetime of experience and help us develop a three-year plan to deal with, um, these people that, that we're not serving.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too appreciate the CTS team a lot. This housing crisis that we're in, we're not unique, uh, to, to Kalamazoo. This is happening all over the country. Um, there was disinvestment in affordable housing decades ago. We're now seeing the remnants of that today. As a city commissioner, I know we cannot make every person happy, uh, but we have to, to serve in a way that is for the benefit of the entire community. And sometimes those things don't feel good when you see people laying on the street or, you know, a shopping cart with all their belongings. We also have to, to respect an individual's power to choose their own journey. There are some people who do not want to live in traditional housing. There are some people who do not want any like kind of life structure. Who are we to judge them? So what I am asking us to do is figure out a creative way that we can continue to serve those individuals within our city and in the county, not just the city, but the entire county in a way that is dignified and that we can meet them right where they are. And so like that's gonna take some thinking out of the box, uh, and just honoring a human being's choice to live how they want to live. We're not gonna be able to reach everyone, but when they are ready, we should have a solution in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Vice Mayor Hess?
Thank you. Um, good thoughts. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Part of what we're voting on here tonight is not just the, the encampment, uh, encampment cleanups as well. We're voting on brownfield cleanups and nuisance property cleanups. So, so yes, I agree that we need to look at the houseless community and give them the dignity and, and work on that moving forward, but we definitely need a way to clean up these other properties that we have in the city.
Other discussion, commissioners? Yeah, just, just bring our focus back here because we're, we're talking about many, many things. This particular contract is about cleaning up. This is what the contract's for. Cleaning up challenging situations all the way across the city. And this is not a contract, you know, a services contract. This is a contract for cleaning up. Well, it is a responsibility, one of our responsibilities, is to try to keep things clean as possible and keep things from being dangerous and keeping the river from being polluted by things being thrown in it and a whole variety of things. Well, you know, this is the contractual relationship we have. This particular, uh, business is to do those kinds of cleanups. Oftentimes there are things just left behind, uh, things abandoned one place or another, uh, which is occurring, you know, over and over again. It's, it's certainly a big challenge, but, you know, that's, that's what we're, that's our decision tonight related to this particular contract. So, that said, Clerk Burnley, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next, reports and legislation. City Manager Ritzma, do you have a report?
Yeah, a couple of items this evening. First, I just wanted to point out that there is a Kalamazoo Streets For All Community Open House that's scheduled, um, 5:30 to 7:30 PM on Thursday, September 12th. Uh, it's at the Epic Center at 359 South Kalamazoo Mall. The meeting will include an overview of the streets for all projects in downtown Kalamazoo and will be the first of several meetings to collect input on the two-way street redesign of Michigan Avenue stretching from Mishakal Street, West Main Street to Harrison Street. So, um, just wanted to make people aware of that as an opportunity to, to speak into the work being done downtown as regards to safe streets for all. I also wanna highlight some work that, uh, our Public Services Department is doing. We are on schedule this year to complete our five, our 5,000th lead service line replacement since we expedited or started our expedited replacement schedule, I believe in like 2017. There will be a community-led education event on October 17, 2024 at 5:00 PM at the Edison Neighborhood Association and, and the work will begin in an Edison neighborhood, uh, replacing lead service lines in November. So just wanted to highlight those items and the great work that our public services team are doing every day and out in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Now is the opportunity for commissioner comments. So any commissioners that would like to make a comment this evening? I see, okay, yes. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. I think last week was a monumental day in the city of Kalamazoo with the announcement of the RX Kids, um, program, which will begin in January 1st, 2025. So that in, in the coming year, every pregnant mother, I believe it is at the fourth month of her pregnancy, will receive 1,500 dollars and the child will receive 500 dollars a month for the first year. That, that is a wonderful program. I just wanted to point out that, that the, the largest study ever done about guaranteed income programs has just been completed a short time ago. They looked at 3,000 participants for three years and, and they looked at what the people did with the money. Well, most of the money they used for rent, for food, for basic needs. But some of the other things that they did with it, they were able to help other people in their family that needed help. They also were able to think differently, to think big. Many of the people, well, at least a significant number of them, started their own businesses. One thing they didn't do was stop working. That whole idea that when people get money, they're not gonna work, that didn't- That whole idea that when people get money, they're not going to work, that didn't happen at all. Instead, they were able to take different kinds of jobs. For example, one woman said that she took, she had a chance for two different jobs. One paid more, the other gave opportunities for advancement. She was able to take that second job, and in two years, she was promoted and moved up. It gave people a sense of dignity, a sense of being able to think differently. So I think the program that we're going to have here is going to have all those great benefits for people that really need it, and I think it's wonderful.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cooney, and certainly you were there, as many Commissioners were, for that announcement. And one thing I did note there was how long you have been involved in this work and your devotion to our shared prosperity Kalamazoo goals, which I know really you and the previous mayor helped get that portion of our work going. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. Other comments? Commissioner Pradel?
No.
No?
Sure. Bye. There was an item in the consent agenda, and I just continued to be just immensely grateful for the team, Boys and Girls Club, that work on this and public safety, but the Bridging Opportunities Program is spectacular. And, you know, I noticed that it's funded through ARPA, and it's, you know, around $120-some-thousand, but I hope we continue to support that and fund that for many, many years to come and continue to find ways, to find them additional resources if they feel like it's needed to strengthen and grow that program. It really, just for people who are not aware, we've talked about this before, but it's a program where basically, you know, you look at the price tag on it and you think to yourself, okay, there's only, you know, a dozen or less kids that are involved in the program. But they, these are, these are individuals that in some cases have had interactions with public safety, you know, dozens of times throughout the course of the year. And so it is well worth that investment and investing in these young people to try to support them. And if you ever get a chance to attend one of the graduations, I didn't get a chance to attend this last one, but it is just very powerful and moving because you'll see the parents of the kiddos who are there or whatever adult in their life, and they're just so proud because it's the first time that they've ever really just been truly proud of the child in their life and know that they're really trying to make a difference. And then the kids are just so invested because they continue to want to show up every day to mentor other young kids. So thank you for all the individuals that are invested in that program, and thank you for the administration for continuing to prioritize that.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure. A few things. First of all, at our last meeting, Chaplain Marcus Mays from Metro Transit Chaplain was to deliver our invocation, and he wasn't here. And he wasn't here because he had passed away on Sunday night. We received that information. But as I look back to his last meeting where he did provide the invocation on June 3, he prayed for all the chaplains who support public entities, and so, including our own public safety. He gave gratitude, he gave grace. He prayed for safety for all of us. He asked that we make this city dignified with love and grace. So his funeral will be on September 20 at Stone's Church, and I just wanted to mention him because he was truly committed to this community and to what we did, what we did, what we do at Metro Transit and what we do as a community. Secondly, so we have Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 coming up. You're going to be hearing a lot more about it, and if you've read your City View, it's in there. Also, read City View and Your View from the Curb. They've all come to us in the last week. They have a plethora of information, things that we need to know about our city. But one of the things with Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 is this common read that we are going to have, and the first common read is going to be the book called Happy City. Happy City: Transforming Our Lives Through Urban Design by Charles Montgomery. There are books available at the library, books available at this is a bookstore. There will be many reading groups available, and all of this will be available on the city website. But I wanted to let you know that in this city of education, where education is a priority for many of us, being able to read about why we're doing what we're doing with our roads and with our streets and with our systems, with our lead pipe removal, with our water systems, it's important that we pay attention to those for the greater good of our city and for its happiness. So that said, I was able to spend some time this weekend in Detroit. Why would you vacation in Detroit? Because it's awesome. Detroit is renewed. Detroit is hopping. Detroit is wonderful. There's a wonderful music festival. If you don't know, we have a tremendous music festival happening here that last week of September called Sounds of the Zoo. So we are doing the kind of things that Detroit is doing to become a vibrant, healthy, thriving city. And so we need our people to buy into that and to say, yes, we are working for the greater good of everyone in this city, their level of happiness. Somebody asked us to talk about, to think about mental health. Mental health starts, A, with here, but B, with us, considering all the systems and functions that it takes to have a happy, healthy, thriving city. And so just honestly, Detroit's cultural growth with the Central Station is very inspirational. I was able to go to the old Tiger Stadium where the Detroit PAL lives. It's the headquarters for the Police Athletic League, which we have here in Kalamazoo. So the culture and the energy that's happening in Detroit is also happening here in Kalamazoo, and I'm just really proud to be a resident of this community where we care so much about RX Kids, about our pregnant moms. We are an early adopter kind of community, like we talked about this evening with buying into our solar systems here, when we have the promise, when we have all of these things that communities of our size don't normally have. We are very, very blessed and moving forward into some greater things here in Kalamazoo, and I can't wait to see the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other comments? Well, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be with everybody here this evening. You know, we just come out of the Labor Day weekend, and that always reminds me of, you know, the dignity and the value of work and how important it is that any person who labors should be able to live a humane, self-supporting life. And the devotion that's to that value has been represented by the possibility to organize in this country and to support that. And, I mean, I deeply believe in the value of work. And one of the things that has supported that for me, which I did not necessarily imagine was going to happen, is over 30 years I've been working at our Public Mental Health Authority, engaging with people who are managing some sort of a mental health disability of some kind or other. And basically, I started doing that work very, very close to when the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed, which was right at the beginning of the 90s. And one of the driving factors coming from the disability community at that time was we want the opportunity to participate in the public square. We want the opportunity to be able to go to work. We want accessibility. We want as much as possible to not feel ourselves that we're not fully human, but that we can also work and participate and contribute to being the masters of our own destiny, including supporting ourselves. And that, that idea of being able to participate fully and, which does mean in this world, the opportunity to work, if possible, and to make an income and support yourself, you know, is so foundationally important to how we all even feel about ourselves, what our own vision is of ourselves. And when we go over Labor Day weekend, and I, you know, many of us, including me, I mean, do have an opportunity to take some time off and have, spend some time with family. It was beautiful, beautiful weather, but all across a time like that, there are people that are still going to work while we're doing that, and that's people that were working in hospitals and nursing homes and people even working in retail. There are people still all during that time that are laboring, that are going to work. But I particularly want to recognize, since we are here at the city, all the city staff that work all through a Labor Day weekend, whether they're making sure that our toilets are flushing, that their water is running, making sure that the city is safe, and with our Public Safety Department in particular, and talking about the city being safe, is that Public Safety Department, you know, has had multiple responsibilities of responding to fires. We've seen that this is happening. It seems to be there's some intentionality involved, I would suggest, in all the fires we've had lately. And whoever is involved in this and whatever is driving your, what seems to be desire to solve vacant buildings to get fires started, I want you to remember one thing. And if you look at some of the pictures for this fire that was most recently occurred very early this morning downtown, that was a dangerous, big fire, and somebody can hurt or die. And we're asking for people who work for the city here at the end of a long Labor Day weekend to respond and to be, you know, careful, but also take a risk to make sure that that fire doesn't spread. And some of the actions you take as a person who puts out fires is you are climbing on rooftops, you are getting close to flames, walls can collapse, and, yes, team, please be careful, but you can't be fully careful when you're doing that kind of work. That's risk work. So I just want to thank all of the team members here that we have the honor of working with who responded to situations like that. Very dangerous fire that occurred. So thank you. Please pass that on to all of those who participate, you know, specifically in our own Public Safety Department here. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.